Good evening. May the Fourth be with you.
(laughing).
Ms. Catholics, do we say, "And also with you"?
It is Star Wars Day. And this is the regular meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. Our first item of business is the approval of the agenda. I do have two things to add tonight. One is that we will have a communications update, probably along with the superintendent's report, just based on the timing. And then we have a non-public that we'll need to do at the end. I have a motion to approve the --
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion for UC.
I'll second.
Second from Heather. Other discussion? All those in favor of the agenda? Six in favor, the student rep in favor, the agenda is approved. Diane is sick tonight and will not be joining us. Next is our public comments. So we have two public commentators signed up tonight. Mary Jeong, first.
Hello, my name is Mary Jeong. I'm in the musical for your good man Charlie Brown. Oyster River High School is presenting a musical this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 PM and 2:00 PM on Saturday for the matinee. And we would just like to tell you to all come and support our cast because we've been working really hard and we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
What characters are you?
What?
What characters are you?
We are part of the ensemble and we are both understudies, so we will be performing in the matinee on Saturday at 2:00.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is the approval of the minutes from April 20th. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 20th.
We have a motion from Denise.
I'll second.
Second from Heather. Are there changes? No?
Yes, just pulling it up. Sorry. Aaron might have them. Andy, it was on page four. Adding on to the sentence, UC Terrell wondered if holding meetings at the recital hall would take away a rental opportunity, add, or reduce flexibility in school programming.
Others? All those in favor of approving the April 20th minutes with that addition? Six in favor and the student rep in favor, the minutes are approved. Notices, accommodations, and comments from the district.
David Goldsmith from Mohairamit. I have a bunch of announcements about things that are going on at our school that I want to celebrate, but I'll start with, I think, a common theme when we all come up here, which is our COVID numbers and how we came back from break. Monday was exceptionally hectic. Our nurse was busy basically all day, emailing, calling, speaking to families, testing students. We had, and then we had the same number of positives, both Monday and Tuesday. We've had six positive students, one positive staff. We've had, on Tuesday, we had 26 absences, which is a lot lower than what we had before break when we had a number of bugs going through the school, but higher COVID numbers, six, than we've had in quite a while. And we just had a huge number of students who, based on symptoms, needed to talk to the nurse, or parents needed to talk to the nurse about whether they could come to school or needed to get tested. So a lot of that happened as well. That has settled down nicely for us. I do have four cool things to talk about. One is that before break, we had our first all-school assembly in two years. We had it outside on the flat field. It was a beautiful day. And we celebrated our community being together, but it was the first time kids had seen literally the whole school in one spot in two years. So that was pretty awesome. But we also unveiled our new school motto. We did a presentation to the PTO before that, talking about the process that we had gone through. We did a process that involved all of our staff and our students, K through 4, learning about mottos, talking about statements that would help them understand expectations for themselves in all the different settings in school, from buses to cafeterias to classrooms. And we came up with a three-pronged motto. "We are kind, we are responsible, we are learners." And we're really excited about that. We unveiled that at our assembly, we chanted it, we talked about it, and already this week, in some of the open circles that are happening in classrooms, teachers are starting to talk about with students, what does it mean to be kind? What does it mean to be responsible and to be a learner? And then we're going to take that through all of our settings and work as a staff and students to come up with those types of appropriate expectations in the different settings about how you can be those things everywhere. You can be a learner in the cafeteria, just like you can be during in math class. So we're really excited about that. Tomorrow, we are celebrating our maple sugaring season with taste tests in our cafeteria and Mohairamit syrup on the menu for anybody getting anything. And if you bring your own lunch, there'll still be taste testing and syrup to be had, early season, late season syrup, there's a big difference. We'll see what the kids like tomorrow, we're pretty excited. We do plan on having next year, getting back to our fabulous pancake breakfasts. We also have two things happening that are connected to our theme of the year, which is Year of the Artist. For this month, we have, we're focusing on music, and a local Barrington native world music expert, Randy Armstrong, is doing a two-week residency with us. And so all students are working with him in music classes and some of our extra encore classes to learn about instruments from around the world and to sing and to play djembe's. That's very cool. And then every year, we finish our Year of work with a Day of, and our Day of the Artist is on Thursday, June 2nd. It's going to be at Mohairamit. Our previous Day ofs, in the beginning of my tenure, were all off-campus. This will be the first one back at Mohairamit in, I guess, six years, which is very cool. And you, everyone is invited. If you are interested in running an art center, if you want to share your love of some activity with students, you're welcome to call our office and to sign up. You can do one session, you could do all three sessions, you could do it for just third and fourth graders, or for kindergartners, or for the whole group. If you just want to do one and you have no idea what you'd like to do, you can give me a call, we'll talk it through and come up with an awesome activity for you, but you are welcome to come. We've advertised in the Durham update, the Friday update, the Mad Barre Town Crier, the Lee mailing as well. We've had some community members call us. Superintendent Morris will be coming and doing an activity. We've got a lot of great things going on, so come one, come all. It's going to be great. That's it for me. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Are you guys selling syrup again this year?
Oh, yeah. And we're selling syrup.
Yes, I need me some.
So Mohairamit syrup might be the best syrup, so come on by.
Thank you.
You got it.
Mastway is not selling syrup, unfortunately, but good evening, Misty Lowe from Mastway School. I will also start with COVID numbers. We have not seen a big blip on the radar at Mastway in regards to COVID, but I do have some numbers for you. We do have 22 students who were out, returning from break for a variety of reasons, travel, bereavement, just not feeling well, things of that nature. Three students were tested positive for COVID, and we have two staff members this week who have also been tested positive for COVID. Our return to school on Monday was a little somber, I'll be honest. We have lost a community member in Lee, and it really impacted our staff and our students. So there was a group of us that went to the service after school on Monday, and that was a sad way to return. But everyone is persevering and coping through that and supporting the family the best that we can. We have on a celebration note, Teacher Appreciation Week. I'd like to do a public thank you to the PTO, who have been very supportive in working with me to organize a variety of fun events that we're doing to celebrate our teachers and our staff for Teacher Appreciation Week, and that's been great. We do have so many exciting things coming up. We're so thrilled to get back to field days and field trips and music concerts, and I could just go on and on. I just want to make sure you know that we've worked hard to keep the district calendar up to date, so that any board member that might be interested in looking at the district calendar and determining what works for your schedule, we would love to have you at any of our events. And I would like to invite you, at any time, to do anything like that. I know Pam Felber sent you a personal invite to the music concerts today, so please consider coming, we'd love to have you. Any questions for me? Nope?
Thank you, Misty.
Jay Rashad, the principal of the middle school. I'm just going to follow suit in terms of what our absentee, absent numbers look like. On Monday, actually, we had, I'm going to report on Tuesday, but on Monday, we had 106 students absent, and actually, that caused me to change my state assessment dates to a later point in a couple of weeks, in the big fear without, just so you know, is just makeup. So I wasn't sure what the numbers would look like the next day, but on Tuesday, we did have 88 students absent, so the numbers definitely did get better. We also had 12 staff absent on Tuesday. We have eight staff COVID positive, and we have students positive. We have 37 students across the school COVID positive. Of those, just so you know, in terms of eighth graders, we had 19 students who were COVID positive, and those students were all on the DC trip. We had 124 students on the DC trip, so 19 of them had tested positive upon return, whatever that looks like. On a positive note, in terms of the DC trip, we had a lot of fun. You know, I think I got a lot of positive feedback from the kids, just in terms of enjoying the experience. One of the better days was Sunday. It was very warm down there, particularly from us, from New Hampshire, it was like the 80s, but the kids had a great time. So just thrilled that we were all able to make that happen for our children. Some transition, here we are in May, I'm starting to think about transition for our students. On Wednesday, May 18th, we will have a fifth grade meet and greet with parents at the middle school in the recital hall. Myself, Bill Sullivan, Andrea Beneskevich, my special ed person, will be there. And I do want to share that prior to that meeting, you know, staff can, parents can do self-guided type tours. I will have some students available, same thing after the meeting. And I'm also going to visit both Mohairamit and Mastway, just to meet with kids separately. I've organized that with David and Misty. And lastly, on June 10th, for our incoming fifth graders, fourth graders, I'm actually going to have all the fourth grade come over and visit with us. They're going to talk with our world language staff, our music staff, we'll give them tours. We're also going to feed them lunch in the cafeteria, so that'll be on June 10th, and their teachers will come over. So that's going to be a few hours, so I'm looking forward to that. So it's going to be a busy late spring at the middle school.
Glad to answer any questions the board might have. Thank you. Thanks, Jay.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, principal at Oyster River High School. So I'll go over our COVID numbers. So yesterday, we did have five adults out, two were teachers. We had 13 students out with COVID, but we had about 79 students out overall. So that's leftover from vacation, not feeling well, a couple of different reasons for that. Couple of good things, you heard about the musical already. I would like to go over our National History Day. And so we have 11 students that will represent Oyster River and New Hampshire in the national competition. National History Day is a nonprofit educational organization that offers programming to encourage students to engage in history projects and hosts a national competition annually for students that succeed in local and statewide competitions. Students can submit projects, including research papers, documentaries, websites, exhibits, and performances. And this year's theme was debate and diplomacy. We have 11 students that are going, and so I just wanted to tell you who those kiddos were. James Oshima, Camden Tucker, Michael Maza, Abby Owens, Hazel Statsko, Lucas Savage, and Delaney Nadeau, Mia Boyd, Siri Ventunbagada, and Maya Granger are all going to national, so we're very proud of them. We also had Dylan Labonte, who won first in a welding competition right before vacation, who will be representing us in the state competition later in May. We finalize the details by Friday for senior week and graduation, and so on Friday, with the newsletter, I'll be sending out more detailed times, places, those types of things for senior week and the graduation practices. The underclassman award announcements will go out by Friday, so families who do have kiddos that are receiving an award for the underclassman announcements will know that, so they know that they should be attending. Our teacher workshop day is May 27th, and it's also Teacher Appreciation Week, so I did want to have a shout-out to all of our teachers this week and the wonderful job they do year-round, but just so, we want to make sure that they know we noticed that. And this year, just being a hard year, triple, or 100%, they do so much hard work, we really appreciate them. We've had something for them every day, but I especially want to thank Rebecca Throop from the PTO, just for her support throughout the year, but also they're providing lunch for our faculty on Friday. And I also wanted to thank our kitchen staff. They've been really helpful the entire year, especially teacher workshop days, but they've helped us out this week with some special treats for teachers. And a special shout-out to Tim Canale, who is the kitchen manager at the high school. And just so everyone knows, Friday is school lunch superhero day, and so we just want to make sure everyone acknowledges that and the hard work that they do here in the district. Any questions?
Where's the national competition for the history?
It's usually Washington DC.
Nice.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Head from the board. Brian?
I had the opportunity last week during Vacation Week to actually come to the high school for our New Hampshire Association of School Business Officials hosted a master facilities conference here at the high school, which was really good. We have about 150 to 180 facilities managers, BAs, from around the state, and some from Massachusetts that came up to learn about facilities and things. And one of the, I was roped into one class hosted by Jim Ruzicki on how to build a new school and how to be involved. So why I got roped into that, I don't know, but then I got roped into being a tour guide with them over at the high, middle school. So I was able to send about, and about 30 people went over and were thoroughly amazed by the middle school. And Jim was trying to keep people out of the mechanical room, because if you're a facilities manager, that's really your, yeah. So as soon as they had the opportunity to go up there, they're all like kids in a candy store, you know, they were salivating and everything. It was wonderful, so. But they really enjoyed it. We didn't get a full tour because we were limited on time, but they're rather impressed, and Jim gave a really, really good PowerPoint on how to be involved as a facilities manager and the whole process, and how, what worked, what didn't work, things like that. So really, a shout-out really is for Sue Caswell, because she was the one that really put it all together as the president of NASBO. So thank you very much, Sue. Thank you. And we got to try out breakfast and lunch at the cafeteria, which was phenomenal. So the food here is much better than most schools, apparently, from what people are telling me.
Excellent. Thanks. What day was that?
Last Wednesday.
Wednesday. Matt?
I just wanted to say thank you to the high school boys tennis team and Coach Paray for having me to their first match yesterday. There were some excellent introductions, the kids had a lot of fun, and congratulations, they defeated Goffstown, apparently, 8 to 1. So thank you.
The New Hampshire School Boards Association put out their call for resolutions this week. We do not always put in any resolutions for consideration, but Diane, in her absence tonight, asked me to mention that if you would like to bring anything forward that we would potentially endorse for submission to the School Boards Association Convention in the fall, let me know, or let Jim know, or let Wendy know, so we can, we can make some time on a future agenda for that. Those are due in July, so we would need to discuss that between now and June.
Did our one in the past, did that carry over? The gun one that we've been doing in the past?
Yeah, it was approved a couple of years ago.
But I mean, is it following all the way through? Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, as Dan reported last year, there was an attempt to, oh, I'm sorry.
Dan reported last year, there was an attempt to rescind it, but it failed, you know, it failed hard.
All right. So that brings us to district reports. I wonder if we might jump ahead to the communications update first. Not that we don't want you to stay for the entire meeting, but just in case not. So Amy Sterndale was part of the superintendent's communication committee last year, and then as we were processing the data from the, both the parent and staff survey, as well as the community survey this year, had volunteered some of her time and expertise to both work with us on that data analysis, as well as with the administration. And so Amy offered to come and give us an update on that work tonight and potential next steps.
There's a screen. I hope that's not my presentation. Oh, good, because I don't know what those slides are. I didn't have any. Screwed me right off. Thank you so much for having me tonight. This is a brief update on the process we've been doing over the last year. As you know, there was that work group that did a tremendous amount of work last spring and came to some really great findings, but also wanted to follow that work with a survey to make sure that they were on track with what they thought the recommendations would be to the board here. And that survey went out last fall. So as Michael said, we've, we've taken all of, not only the data that came out that Andy Smith has already presented to you, I believe, but all of those comments and coding those to really understand, more of a deep dive on what are the trends. And my role, I think, my assignment was to start to take all of that input from last year and start transitioning it into action items and recommendations back to the school district. So this week, I met with Jim, Suzanne, the principals, and all of the tech integrators, and presented to them sort of these initial recommendations. And it was, I think, a very successful meeting. We really enjoyed being able to start to think about, what does this look like? What are some of the things we want to tackle first? As you can imagine, we covered all of the topics that you could list in your head right now. The website, how we do email, all of the different technology that's available throughout the school district, some of the expectations that we have around how parents will get communication, how teachers will get it, all of these different, you know, elements. And as, you know, we even talked about social media, we talked about the counseling office, athletics. And so my invitation to you all is, I'd love to do that presentation to the board at a time that Jim identifies as useful, so that we can really get all on the same page around what those details are like. It's a fairly detailed presentation, because as you can imagine, there's a lot of recommendations. There's a lot of opportunities for ways that we can look at some best practices, that we can update some things from what we've been using in the past. And it was great to talk to everyone in the district, because, as you can imagine, a lot of them, not only were already on, on track with doing some of this work, but they, they let me know they were in that process of starting to work on the website when COVID hit, and so they already had a lot of the same lists that I did of things that they were looking to improve. So it's an exciting time to be able to dig into this work. I think that's it. I just want to sort of say, I think it would be a really fun conversation to have with all of you, to make sure that, that the paths forward are in line with your expectations and what you want to make sure is covered. And so that's, that's my hope, and I can answer any questions today about, you know, where we are in the process.
If I could just add, Amy, the workshop was incredibly well-received by the administrators and tech integrators, and we're anxious to start doing the work. The presentation was so well-done, and I really can't wait till the board gets to be able to participate in that presentation as well.
I think they would all tell you, it was a lot. It was not a quick summary, because it had to be a lot, but it now gives us that place to start the work from and really, really get some priorities. So, yeah, thank you. I'm glad it was, glad it was well-received.
So our next step, then, if the board is in agreement, would be to hold a workshop for that, for that purpose. I think there's enough content that it's not something we would try to, try to include as part of our, one of our regular, regular meetings. So I wanted to pose that question to the board as to whether that is, that is something that we want to add to the, add to the calendar.
I definitely think it's worthwhile. I, I think it would be, you know, we've identified communication, you know, as one of our goals and to how do we improve, so I think it's worth listening to the presentation and having a conversation about it.
Agree, and the touchpoints with the board that would lead into, you know, a lot is not in the board's purview, but things like resourcing or, you know, setting those broad priorities are. So not holding it till the final presentation, but engaging us throughout is great.
Excellent, yeah.
Other comments or questions for Amy? So I will work with Amy and Jim and Wendy, we'll propose some dates, Wendy will probably be in touch to, as we try to figure out what would work to have that workshop then. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll resume then with the rest of the agenda with the assistant superintendent and the competency-based learning, next steps.
Good evening. So this is the second part in the presentation from, I believe it was last month. And today, what we're going to be talking about is how we communicate, it's kind of funny, we're just talking about communication. Communicate student learning to families and to students themselves and what that looks like. So we're going, there's four areas that I want to touch on. One is, I just want to review with everyone what the scales are for each building, because it's going to look different for each building. And then I'm going to talk about what the communication looks like, and then go into certain goals and where we're hoping to go to for next steps around, around both of these topics. And I'm going to go building by, or level by level. And then what I'd like to do is, if it's, I don't know if you want me to stop at each level and allow for questions, or if it's better if I just go through the whole thing and then we can do questions at the end. It's up to you.
Let's take them as we go.
Okay. So we're going to start with elementary. So the elementary schools have two areas for scales, if you want to look at it that way. It was very hard to, terminology can be very tricky. So we have habits of learning, which you'll see in every building, they have habits of learning, or at every level. And then we also have a standards table. So at the elementary level, we have meets the standard, progressing towards the standard, beginning to develop the standard, and then we have not yet assessed. And that is, each of those, that table or those standard tables are connected to the standard within the report card. And we'll talk a little bit more about the report card in a minute. And then the habits of learning, there, the, there are habits of learning that are part of the report card, and those habits of learning, again, they use consistently most of the time, some of the time, and requires ongoing support. So that's the, that's in essence, the scale that is used at the middle, at the elementary school level. This is something that pre-pandemic Todd, David, and Misty had talked about looking at again as a regular review, because this is something you want to review regularly, and it was put on hold a little, and so, because of the pandemic. So we've been talking, I've been talking to Misty and David about, about this, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about the, what that looks like moving forward. Elementary reporting, we have, again, the list of standards for each grade level, and then you have the scale that's associated with that. The reporting is done in Power School. So Power School is, is the primary place where parents will go. That's how they receive their information. There's fall conferences that are a part of that, and the reporting occurs twice a year. So we have the, we have January, and then we have the end of the year, and then in the fall, we have the conferences with parents. So for elementary school, that's really what we're talking about for, and this is the official communication that large, that, that all students are engaged with, with the school. However, we know in elementary school, there is ongoing communication between classroom teachers and parents on a regular basis. Just, it's developmentally appropriate at that level to have that regular and ongoing discussions around student learning. So while this is officially sort of how and when things are reported, we know that, that there is discussion that occurs throughout the year. So looking ahead, like I said, we, we want to just sit down and look at the report card. This is something that hasn't been looked at since the pandemic, and so David and Misty and I will just sit and look at it and see what it, see what is there. And then the question would be, do there is discussion that occurs throughout the year. So looking ahead, like I said, we want to just sit down and look at the report card. This is something that hasn't been looked at since the pandemic, and so David and Misty and I will just sit and look at it and see what it see what is there. And then the question would be, do there need to be any adjustments when the teachers come back? And do there need to be adjustments? Have teachers made any changes to the standards that they're measuring? Because as we know, as time progresses, there are curriculum updates and changes and program changes, and so we need to ask them, is this effective for you in delivering information about student learning to parents? And so we'll engage in that. And as we go through regular curriculum reviews and go through the cycle, that's going to be a regular conversation to be having with teachers is to be revisiting that. And we are restarting the curriculum. I think I mentioned this before, we're restarting the curriculum cycle. So this year we're looking at starting work around science, health, and world language. Those are the those are the content areas that the cycle will pick up on, and we'll start looking at that this summer. And every year there's and at a different point, I can share this with you, there's a cycle that goes through. So as that cycle goes through, you have to ask, is the reporting accurate? Is the reporting what it needs to be to be able to demonstrate where students are are in their learning? So that's for the elementary school. It's a very sort of brief overview. I don't know if anyone has any questions or if you want me to keep going. Keep going? Okay. So we're going to move on to middle school. So middle school has a little bit of a different scale that they use. They have habits of learning, and their habits of learning are throughout the whole school. It's being respectful, responsible, engaged, and having a growth mindset. They use the scale for that that is on the right-hand side, and they use the scale for competency learning, what is on the right-hand side. So exemplary meets progressing, beginning, and then insufficient evidence. Insufficient evidence is not available as an option within Schoology, however, it is available in Power School. And so we're going to I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But that is something that the teachers do use, and that basically just means the student hasn't hasn't completed enough formative or summative assignments to be able to determine if they if they've met the competency. So there do needs to be continuing work with that. And that can be for a variety of reasons. I do want to say that in in talking to teachers, there are the teachers don't necessarily use this type of language with kids. So for instance, I have a I had a teacher send me this today. For instance, they will say to say to the kids, you are beginning, and beginning means that you have shown some understanding and skill, but revision and a meeting with your teachers needed to clear up any areas of a misunderstanding. So they may use a little bit of a different language with students, and you may hear that from from the students' teachers. So so you're beginning in your learning, let's let's meet, let's have a discussion, let's progress in your learning. So that that's something I just want to point that out. So middle school, the way middle school reports, pre-pandemic, the year that we went out for the pandemic, we had adopted Schoology. And so we were using Schoology as our learning management system. And the middle school was in the process of looking at competency grading within within that learning management system. When we went into the pandemic, it kind of fast forwarded that work. And so what we are what we're talking about now is sort of slowing that down and revisiting that and looking at it. So Schoology is the learning management system where students are putting their work in and teachers are assessing that work. And it's almost like almost equate it to a grade book. So it's sort of like the old school grade book that had the green or the red cover, and you'd open it up and see the student's name, which is what I used to use. And and you'd put the, you know, you'd put the grades in for the students. And so when when we look at the the reporting in Schoology, you're seeing basically the grade book. Power School is our student information system, which is different than a learning management system. Power School is how we gather data such as attendance and and grades that gets then reported to the state. So it is traditionally the student information system that is what reports scales and student learning and progress to parents. That's traditionally the learning management system gives you more information, allows you to dive more deeply into the learning of students. And so the middle school has is using Schoology as their reporting mechanism for parents. However, at the end of each semester, core classes, the teachers are going in and putting in information in hand, putting in information into Power School. And then UA teachers, because it's done quarterly, they're going in at the end of each quarter and putting hand, putting information into Power School. This is done primarily because when the middle school went to using Schoology as a reporting mechanism for teach for parents to be able to go to see student progress and growth, the Schoology and Power School were not effectively communicating with each other. It was very difficult to sync them. So that is one of the that's the primary reason why that happened the way it did. And there were some complications with the use of Power School to be able to demonstrate competency learning and growth for students, and I'm going to revisit that point in a minute. And then we also have the fall conferences, just like the elementary school. And then, again, like I said, there's a few points in the year when the teachers go in and they put into Power School what how kids are doing. They manually enter them. So one of the things that we've learned is some of the things when we adopted when the middle school adopted Schoology and the district adopted Schoology and where we are now, there've been a lot of updates and changes. So Power School now owns Schoology. So that changes things dramatically. So what we need to do is we need, there's many levels of of things that we need to look at. One of them is Schoology itself. It's how information is being put into Schoology that parents can access and creating some consistency, clarity, and some standardization to that so that when parents go in, they're able to see information that is helpful to them. And to be able to do that, we need a lens, a parent lens. And so Jay and I are working on that right now. We also need to build some school-wide criteria and guidelines. Now that the teachers have been using Schoology for for a significant amount of time now, you know, we're in, I think, probably two, year two, year three. Now that we're here, we need to really go back and say, okay, are we setting this up appropriately? The way that the teachers are setting up their classes, is it giving students and parents and giving them the information they need to be able to monitor student growth and learning? And so we have to ask those questions. That's a teacher question, and they need to be part of the dialogue and conversation. And then we also need to ask kids that question. So some of it's going to be asking students, are you seeing the, you know, show me what you see? Because students are seeing one piece of Schoology, parents are seeing a different piece of Schoology, and the teachers are seeing a different piece of Schoology. So we need to make sure that there's understanding about what everyone is seeing as well. So that with that, we also need to be looking at how are we helping parents to get into Schoology and use it? Are we offering appropriate information? Are we communicating effectively? You know, and not only with the one of the things that Amy said in our training, and I was talking to some of the teachers about this today, is that I really appreciate it is we can communicate out as many times as we possibly can, but if the people on the other side aren't necessarily receiving that information, then the communication isn't really that effective. So we need to find out what is it that people on the other side really, really need to see, what they want to see, and then merge merge those pieces together. And so that's the Schoology piece. There is consistent and clear feedback loop for students is so important. One of the beauties of using Schoology is that there is continual feedback. And kids can access, in essence, they can access the grade book and see how they're doing. There's there's full transparency there. It's not like it's hidden, and they're trying to figure out what their grade is or how they're how they're progressing, or it's full transparency. They know how they performed on an assessment. They can open it up. They can look at the rubric. It'll tell them exactly how they did. They can meet, the teachers can write comments. And so that feedback loop within Schoology between teachers and students is actually really important. We want to make sure we keep that. We don't want to lose that. And then we have been doing a lot of, I've been working with Celeste Best, who's the tech integrator at the high school, Janet Martel at the middle school, Josh, Josh Alstead and and Robert Strobel, to to do some trainings and to learn more about Schoology and Power School. Just how they sync together, what the possibilities are, answer some of the questions, be able to answer questions that people may have as we start to get feedback from parents and teachers and even students so that we have a base of knowledge so that we can engage in those conversations very effectively and look for solutions. So we need to identify what some of the challenges are and then be very solution-based. And then revisit. That's another piece. Once you make, if you make changes, you need to revisit those changes, and you need to ask, are were the changes effective? Are they doing what we think they're going to do? And so so the work doesn't just end because you make the changes, you have to kind of, you have to keep revisiting. And so what we would like to do this summer really is to, well, before the summer, is to really dive into some of those stakeholder groups and ask some questions of them. And then over the summer, really dive into what how we can make some changes within Schoology and Power School to be able to do the best we can and to answer some of the challenges that we're seeing and then revisit it again at the beginning of the school year after we've had some time pass and people have been using Schoology and Power School. Let's revisit it again and take a look at it and see, are we are we making headway with this? At the same time that that is happening, I do want to say, at the same time that's happening, we have to continue to do competency review. We need to continue this other work. So this is an additional, very important piece. And and we have, Jay and I have been working on starting this work in May. So we're going to this month, we're going to start at the end of May.
So what are the stakeholder groups that you're?
So the stakeholder groups will be a parent group. It will be, and it need, it'll be a parent group, a student group, and a teacher group. And then the tech integrators are involved with that. Josh and Rob Strobel and I are also involved with that because of the technical side of things. One of the things that we need to just remember is the technology is is there to help us, but there's only so much it can do. So we need to just be aware of what we're asking it to do and figure out if we can if we can ask it to do these things. So that's why we need to have that technical piece also. So they're involved with it as well. And it's important to bring the high school into the conversation, too, because they do use Schoology as a learning management system. And so we need to be, we need to make sure that anything that we do at the middle school is not going to impact the high school. We need to know, you know, it, can you have dual systems running differently? Can you have? And so those, that's why Celeste Best is part of that conversation, and there will be times where we probably pull Becca into the conversation as well.
So pre-COVID, we had talked about having focus groups, Michael. And so Suzanne is in the process, and Jay are putting together a parent focus group so that we have a group who can critique the work as we're doing it. They can inform us what the frustrations are. We can make changes. We present the new version to them. So we'll have a constant parent group who is is critiquing the work as it goes.
Questions about the middle school?
I do have one, and it might apply to the high school also. Is there a process to apply the middle grade, the middle school grading system to the fourth graders so that they're not suddenly finding that their meets work is progressing, even though they're putting in the same level of work?
That's a great question. We can look at that. That's something that we would probably need to talk to David, Misty, and Jay about and discuss what that looks like because the scales are different.
And the same with the high schools. So the eighth graders have no idea if their M's or E's translate to B's or A's.
So we don't want, one of the things that we want to be careful about is putting at the M's and the E's and the number together because the competency competency scales are not associated with numbers. So that's one of the challenges for ninth-grade teachers is how you transition kids into a hundred-point scale. Because the hundred, and this is the next conversation, you want me to go? I don't know if people have other questions about the middle school, but I could start talking about the high school scale.
Other questions about the middle school?
I think that's important. I think the transition's really important.
We seem to be talking a lot about the efficiency and effectiveness of the process itself, the communication, the inefficiencies of teachers having to to enter data again. I also think under the conversation, the big conversation topic today of of the sort of the grading and recording, there are questions about how the teachers are know what the expectations are. Is there the same yardstick, for example, across all all fourth-grade teachers or all eighth-grade ELA teachers for what is expected at each quarter? Can you get meets at each quarter even though you're not at what it would be? You know, you don't have the full skill. So for math, for example, there the the competencies are sequential. You know, you, at least according to my children, there you meet a certain competency, and then you move on. You don't necessarily come back to dividing fractions again because you you've done that. But for other classes such as as ELA, you know, you're synthesizing information, you would meet expectations for synthesizing information at for the first quarter. But if you stayed at that level, you wouldn't meet it at the second quarter because there's this expectation of growth over the over the year.
Yep.
So that's just an example. I'm wondering if we're going to be getting to that topic, to the topic of of the monitoring the individual child. And then finally, where some of the questions were last time, the what we're what we're actually measuring, and is it meaningful and motivating to various audiences, the kids, the parents, the teachers, colleges? So I'm not sure whether to ask my questions now for these various levels or or to whether we're going to talk about sort of the input and reporting process now before we move into some of the the other ways of addressing the topic.
So I have additional questions for you after hearing your questions. And then I also, I see your questions as is a little bit different. So so entering, teachers entering, I haven't heard them ever complain about about going in and entering into Power School. I think that my conversation about entering has to do with if we're using Power School as our student system or our management system, information system, then it should be linking, it should be syncing with our learning management system. So that's when I talk about them speaking to each other, it's not necessarily because the teachers have to go in and enter. It's because if these two systems are owned by the same company, they should really be speaking to each other. As far as expectations and consistency, I think calibrating, teachers calibrating takes time. That's professional development time that's really important, and it's ongoing. It's never done. It's it's ongoing work. You have to sit down, and that kind of calibration can be horizontal and vertical. So you can have teachers calibrating horizontally. So and what I mean by that is you could have fifth-grade ELA teachers sitting down calibrating, or you could have a calibration. I've been in some calibrations that are really powerful where you have, you know, grades six through 12 ELA teachers calibrating together and and having conversations about it. But in order, that is an on, that is a conversation that I have been hearing people have since I've been in education. What does this mean? Is everybody, is everybody, what is grade inflation? I mean, we could talk about colleges and universities and their conversations around grade inflation. So that, as far as same expectations, consistency, and what we're measuring, how we're measuring, that's part of that ongoing professional development that faculty need time to do together to have those conversations about what does it mean? Right? What does a meets mean? What does it look like? Does your meets look like my meets? And and that that takes some some time and some calibration. So I would love to see that work happen. We need time to do that work, and teachers, teachers need the opportunity to do that work. I do think they already do it. I see it. I used to see it all the time in the high school. I would see it a lot. I'd see teachers sharing essays. I'd see teachers having common assessments. You can do amazing work with common assessments because you can have those types of conversations. I've seen math teachers sit around the table with with exams and or and/or summative assessments and have these types of conversations and grade each other's work. And, you know, so that is happening. It just takes time.
Can I just offer also UC, for the board to know? Suzanne did a presentation today with the middle school staff. And I was so impressed with the middle school staff's receptivity to this very conversation because they quite frankly are desperate to have this conversation. You know, COVID interrupted so much and part of it is to continue to do this work. And there were, the, the staff was offering information today. They were interacting with Suzanne in the presentation. It was pretty incredible and I left feeling like this is a group of professionals who want to improve what they're doing. And we talked about the output being incredibly inconsistent and utilizing what a parent would see. And it was one of the teachers who put it on the table, you know? I don't know what a parent sees. Because what they did when they did the work is they did it from a teacher perspective, not from the receiver's perspective. They were trying to get together a system that made sense to them as educators, but they didn't put the report out as a priority. And I think now it's very clearly a priority. And so they're, they, they were very engaged and willing to do the work.
Denise?
It's, it's along the same lines because I do think, and I, and I know there's always been questions about, you know, what does it mean? But you can look at a B and be like, a B is a quote unquote "good grade." Generally speaking, people kind of understand that. But when a child gets progressing, I think, and, and this is what I'm hearing, is that that's confusing sometimes to parents to be like, well, is that good? Or is that, are they behind? Like they can't tell where that benchmark really is. It kind of goes to UC's point about, you know, they could have met that same expectation, you know, in quarter one, and now all of a sudden, what? Now I'm progressing, but I met it. So how does that work? So I think it is a little bit, I think perhaps the, the vagueness of it, or maybe it's just getting used to it. But I think that's what I've heard from some parents that is challenging because they're not understanding if their child is really where, you know, where they should be, like should be kind of, or is there cause for worry? Are they fine? Like they just don't understand.
And I think that's, that's an important point, Denise, which is one of the reasons why we need to sit down with parents and have that conversation about what they're seeing, what information would be helpful and useful to them, what are, you know? How can we help with the way in which we're showing them where student learning is? And so I think that, that stakeholder group is, that those meetings are going to be very, very important. And, and I also think a big piece of it is really, we need to remember that parents are coming into, you can't just talk about competencies and, and, and teach people about them and, and learn about what MEETS means and what, and once. This is, this has to happen every year. You get new parents in and then parents leave. So it's a, it's a, it's something that we need to be better at, sharing information and having these discussions with parents. And again, with the pandemic, it was really challenging to do that. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity. And I know Jay is looking forward to the opportunity to having those conversations with parents and also to really diving into what type of learning we can do together also. You know, how can we help parents understand what they're seeing in Schoology and understand competencies and understand what MEETS means? What does MEETS mean? I think that's important. And how can it keep coming back up again?
I just, I have a model in my head and I just want to run it past to see if. It seems like there are two different approaches to the competencies kind of based on the, the class at least. One is again in math where you're going through and you're, there's different skill development. It's like check it off and move on. And the other is more like there's a slope. And for synthesizing information, this is where we expect a sixth grader in quarter one. This is where we expect quarter two, and so on and so forth. And so if you meet in the first quarter, but then you fall short of where that curve has, that, that overall increase has been, then you might be progressing for the second quarter. So everyone's progressing still, but it's like whether you've met that calibrated expectation for where it is. That's how I have it in my head. Is that correct with these two different models?
So competencies for, competencies should be broad overarching goals for student learning. If a competency is specific to content, then it is not a competency, it's a standard. I, I know exactly what you're going to point to. So what we need to do and what we taught, what I talked to the faculty about today is we need to revisit the competencies that are there because not all of them are, there is an inconsistency with the way in which competencies are written. And that does not help with communication, right? So that's, that, when I say, when I talk about curriculum work, that's, the curriculum work and this piece are directly connected to each other because if your, if your curriculum has very, is not consistent, then it leads to confusion, consistent with language and meaning. So, so that's what we need to get back to. So today we talked, today I talked to the faculty at the middle school about revisiting. We need to revisit. You need to ask yourself, are my competencies broad and overarching? And if they're not, then you need to revisit that. Because the standards is where the content is heavy. That's where you, standards and learning targets are where you have those heavy content areas. So I know exactly what you're going to, and I'm happy to have that conversation with you, UC, as well, if you'd like, about, about what that work would look like. And I'm happy to bring that back up to the board also if you'd like to learn more about the work that the faculty is doing around the competencies and, and making sure that there's consistency throughout the school. Technically, competencies should be revisited, right? So you're, you have a competency, it's a broad overarching, something broad and overarching, you can revisit that throughout the year. You're not going to just be analyzing literature once. You're probably going to be analyzing it multiple times. And so you're, you're hoping throughout the year that the student is, is learning that. You do hope that the arc is like this, right? But for some kids, it may not be like that. For some kids, you know, for a variety of different reasons, it could kind of look like that. Right? So, so, and that's where you see some of the confusion around what the MEETS and the progressing and all of that. So.
It's actually easiest though when it's a checklist because I can say my student is struggling with dividing fractions, but they're, you know, it's like more concrete as a parent.
So those are the standards. You would still have access to that information, but those are the standards. Those aren't the competencies. So the competencies might be more broad and overarching, but the standards are specific to content. So that would be, you know, decimals and fractions and those pieces would be. And you would still have access to that information, but we need to make sure that it's easy for you to access and easier, and for you to be able to see where your student is. So if you saw the competency and you're wondering, well, what's included in this competency right now? You could pull it down and see all those standards.
So which should be on the progress reports, competencies or standards?
So that's what we're going to talk to parents about, right? What would they like to see? Would they like to see the competencies and the standards? Would they like to see a report card that just has, just has the competencies? And then if you want to know the standards and know more information, you can dive into that into Schoology, right? So that's, that's the dialogue that we need to be having with teachers and parents. Teachers, what information do they want to share? Because they want to share the standards, right? So they want you to know. They want to, they've opened their grade books in essence on Power School. They basically said, here's all the information. So, so that, they want to share that information with parents, but they want to do it in an effective way that's easy for people to understand and access. And so that's what we need to figure out.
So when we were talking about calibrating, both laterally and vertically, calibrating the, the scale, you said repeatedly, it takes time, the teachers are willing to do the work, it's PD time. Are they not getting those opportunities now? Do we need to start thinking about how to build in a cycle that maybe matches the curriculum cycle that we start doing that? I just, you know, because it kind of made it sound like, well, they really want to, but they're really not doing it right now because they don't have time. And I don't think that's what you meant, but I wanted some clarification.
Well, there's only, there's only so much they can do during the school year, right? There's only so many, and to pull them out of the classrooms, they do not want to be pulled out of the classrooms with kids. Like that's just the, the one thing they don't want to do is miss contact time with kids. So you're really talking about the summer and, and I have to tell you, I had, we, we have more requests for professional development hours than we have allocated funds for. So, so we're trying to, Jim and I met with the principals today and with Sue, and we're trying to figure out, okay, how can we fulfill these requests that are around writing curriculum, that are around science, you know, diving into the science curriculum and having K through 12 conversations? We have faculty signing up for this work and we want to make it happen. So we're, we're talking about that right now.
So I'd just add that I was very pleased and surprised coming out of this particular school year after last summer with COVID. Last summer, we could have given teachers a million bucks and there's just no energy left after the pandemic year to be able to do this kind of what I call R and D work. The teachers this year surprised me. We have twice as many proposals as we have money to fund. And what I shared with the principals today is this work is what we should be funding, but we have not built a budget around that type of professional development. And we're always faced with, you know, this dilemma of adding more positions. But if professional development is that important to our staff, then instead of adding positions, we should be adding time and money in the summertime for those teachers who are willing and, and really want to work on these very issues. So when we propose a budget next year, you'll, you will see a significant increase in, in the PD budget because our teachers want to do this work. They can't do it during an instructional day. And we only have five, this is David's mantra, so I'm copying David now. We only have so many PD days in the school year and they're virtually all spoken for before they're even put in the calendar because there's that demand. So unlike most school systems, our teachers want to work in the summertime. And we need to be funding that work because that really is what's choking our growth, the opportunity for our staff to work. It's interesting, Heather, that you asked that question because I did say to the administrators today, as soon as they get an opportunity to talk about this issue, we're going to talk about it. So your question is dead on and I'm glad that you asked it.
So I have to follow up with the willing and want to part of the sentence you said. They're willing and they want to, most of them. So in order to get the calibration to work, don't we need all of them?
Well, actually, we can do, if we have a methodology on, and on calibration, and I call it inter-rater reliability, which is, you know, very similar. And I was talking, you know, after Suzanne's presentation to a social studies teacher. And we were just talking about that very issue that, you know, is there a common rubric that they're all using? And, you know, the test of that is, once there is a rubric, you, you give, if Michael's a social studies teacher and Denise is a social studies teacher and Olivia is, then we give our, our work to them. If our students work to them and see if they come up with the same or close to the same competency criteria that I did as a teacher. That can be done during school, school weeks. But creating the rubric and building that criteria, that's summertime work. So what's really important is that our teachers know what it is they're rating, getting the consistency into the scale, the first level of this. And the second part is, once you know what you're doing, are we doing it in a similar fashion, similar expectation? So we, we do that exercise and, you know, Denise comes up with a beginning and all Olivia, Michael and I come up with MEETS. How did, then you have the conversation about how did you get to beginning? And how did we get to MEETS? And it's, it's not a right/wrong issue. It's an elevation of the conversation issue. And the idea is that in the, you know, over time, you would do that exercise and everybody would come up with pretty much the same score. So that's why in that particular issue, it's a time-intensive issue and it will happen over, you know, many school years. But the issue of consistency of product, what the parents are seeing, that's an immediate issue. Because when we're looking at these parent reports, what we're seeing is a dramatic range in how things are presented. You use the maths, math program as a good example. I actually use that same example today. And, you know, the math teacher has done this tremendous job of laying out every single standard. And so a parent can easily see, you know, how the student is doing. But what I asked him was, but what competency are you referring to? You know, how does a parent know that this is, you know, this overarching math competency because you haven't referenced it? He got that, you know? And, and then, you know, there's the issue of what's not entered? You know, we, we had this experience where we looked at these reports and two out of the four core teachers had never put any information into habits of learning. Well, recognizing that people want to know how their children are doing academically, the habits of learning becomes an equally important piece for making assessments on MTSS. And that came out through a teacher today. So the teachers are very aware and that's when I say they are aware and willing. I've been in big group meetings before, and I'm sure you all have, where people have received the information. You could see kind of the eyes glass over and the, you know, groan. That was not what I saw today with the middle school. They were anxious to get back to this work. And so it's kind of like, either the impact, and I don't want to always use COVID as an excuse, but COVID stopped PD for almost two years. And we were on this train before COVID hit. And then, you know, the train was stopped and now we're restarting it. And I was pretty excited to see how positive the teachers were when we were talking about it. They were raising the very issues that all of you have raised.
Should I keep going or do we have further discussion about the middle school question?
Let's move on to the high school.
Okay. So the high school, we, we have habits of learning, habits of work and learning. They are not school-wide. That summer work that has been proposed is to have a group work on that. That was work that was started pre-pandemic and was put on, put on hold. So the goal is to revive that and to look at school-wide competencies or, and standards associated with those habits of work and learning. It, it is looked at within the classroom and, and teachers do have it within their coursework, but it isn't necessarily consistent throughout the building. Oyster River High School has a 100-point scale. So it's the traditional, traditional scale where you have a range of A's, a range of Bs, Cs, and D's. And then you have a 64 points of failing that where students do not earn credit. We don't have, we don't round up. So that's just a policy. It's been in place for many, many, many years. And it, it is, it is on the program of studies and in the handbook and, and a lot of different places. And, but we don't have, and we don't have definitions of how these equate to competencies. So there, there are competencies and standards at the high school and the teachers are marrying the competencies and standards within their classes the best that they can to grading scales that are within their, within their classroom and then equating that to some, a number in some way. And it's going to vary depending on the teacher, how that's done. And so this is an ongoing conversation. It has been going on for many years, was paused. And I know that Becca and the high school teachers have, have revived that discussion. Does anyone, I'm going to keep going and then if you have questions, we can come back to it. So Power Schools, yeah?
So John was saying something, what was it, last schoolwork meeting, about the engage every learner. There's some motto at the high school that we're trying to pull into the capstone experience.
So Vision of a Graduate, that's it. So Vision of a Graduate is actually part of the district-wide work that, that is in summer work, which I have, I have K through, I have elementary, middle, and high school teachers working together with me on Vision of a Graduate and, and trying to push that out into the buildings. That, that is part. And I don't want to speak for the high school and the work that they're currently doing, but there's Vision of a Graduate and Habits of Learning, Work and Learning, and those things are interconnected. So, reporting, they, the high school uses Power School as the reporting mechanism. They do use Schoology as the learning, learning management system for courses. They do not speak. So, Power School, again, and Schoology are not speaking at the high school right now to each other. And so, teachers that are using Schoology and, and grading work within Schoology are then also putting it into Power School as well. Some teachers are not using Schoology for grading and they're just using Power School for grading. Others are, are using both, but Power School is the place where students go and parents go to see the scale of, of learning for students at the high school. There is quarterly reporting that is done. That is what shows up on the transcript. So, the quarterly reports is what's, what is official. However, there's interim reports within each quarter that is, that are sent to parents and to, to kids. So, there's a marking point there for kids to know, okay, this is how I'm doing. And this is, you know, a reminder to parents, go in, go into Power School and take a look. The grades are updated and if you have any questions, reach out to teachers. Parents and students, well, students obviously, but parents have access to Schoology. So, they have their own login for the high school and they can go in and look at student, student work, just, just as they can within the middle school. Schoology grade book, there is a pilot team. When I say that there's a group of high school parent, high school teachers that are using Schoology for grading, that's a pilot, a pilot group that was started in 2019 to kind of dabble in Schoology as a grading mechanism to, to see how they could use it for the high school. And that group is going to be revived to, to get a little bit more deeply involved with that next year. And again, I don't want to speak too much about what that looks like at this time. Yeah?
I'm being a real pain today. So, I just want to see if I understand. So, if I write a history report, I'm likely submitting it digitally, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that through Schoology or Power School?
So, you're, so Power School is just for reporting. So, anything that you would be submitting, you'd be submitting through Schoology. So, your work goes into Schoology.
So, the work goes into Schoology, but then the feedback from the teacher, I'm looking for that 95, sweet, sweet 95, where do I see that as a student? Does that go to Schoology? Does that show up in?
It could be.
Olivia's like, oh, I got it.
Yeah, go ahead, Olivia.
So, it depends on like essays and that sort of thing where you're submitting it on Schoology typically in like the top right corner. It'll have your grade out of 100 up at the top and you'll have a rubric. And if you click on your document, your teacher can let, can leave comments on it. So, you know exactly which parts you got points off here, or you did really well in this section, that sort of thing. And you can, and they'll write comments in the rubric as well. Or if it's like a math test or something like that, like if you have to submit it online for whatever reason, typically those grades will be put into Power School where teachers can also leave comments there if they need.
So, within Power School, it's not just, it's an assignment-based?
It's basically, yeah.
Or is it just?
It basically will have like your test, like your tests, your homeworks, that sort of thing. Like all the assignments that you're, that are going into your quarter grade or semester grade, whatever it is, will be on Power School with the grade next to it. And depending on the assignment, you can leave like comments, like the teacher can leave comments, but it's not like a platform to have a lot of comments versus Schoology is where you would have all that stuff.
And so, are the standards listed like they are in the middle school within the Power School?
No.
Okay. So, it's just like, here's your homework grade for math, here's your test.
In Power School, the standards, competencies are not, it's assignment grade. In Schoology, you'll see more of that, but it's not at the same level as the middle school. And, and so, yeah, not the, it's not exactly the same as what the middle school is doing.
It's just at the beginning stages at the high school, Heather.
Okay. So, I guess as we think about it, is there, would we like the middle and the high school to be doing similar things? And the middle school is at a different place than the high school is right now? Or they functionally need to do different things because the work is different? Is that like, have we thought, I'm, I'm really a pain today. Have we thought at all about like, we want everybody doing the same thing from grade five up? Or high school really does need to be different?
High school really does need to be different. And, you know, the competency work is important at the high school. And typically, what's happening at high schools across the country is they are marrying the traditional system with the competency-based system. So, it's a dual system. And that's largely driven by parent concern because of colleges. And it's not being driven by the colleges though. The colleges will take a report in any form what, that you give it to them and they translate it into their world. But the concern of going purely with a competency-based model at the high school is the idea that there's a possibility they could impact a child's transcript in college entrance. But all of my research over the years doesn't, they get all kinds of different grading systems anyway.
They recalculate all the transcripts.
But our, our, I think our parent group really would, really would prefer we have a dual system as opposed to a single system like K through.
I wasn't necessarily talking about the moving off the 80, 90, 100 scale. It, it's just what, I was just curious what Power School shows you. Like as an elementary school, it will have like counts to 10, can count by five listed under math. And then you can see all of those little bits. And I think the high school has built some of that with their competencies and some of the standards underneath that. Does that show up in the grading? Or is the grading math, you did about 95% on your homework and about 95% on your test. So, your overall school scores are 95 and the competencies are now completely divorced from the number?
They're not divorced from the number. They're just not connected for the parents. You'll see the traditional grading marking system at the high school and the relationship to competencies doesn't actually exist except at the individual teacher level. And that's really the work that we have to do. And that's what Suzanne was referring to about.
And you'll see it in Schoology. So, there's some parents, if they go into Schoology, you'll see competencies, you'll see some of that work. The, at the start of the year, the teachers will hand out a syllabus to the students and they'll see the competencies on the syllabus. And so, there's, there's place, you know, the, the kids, and Olivia can speak to this because she's in the classroom, but the competencies and the standards are discussed with students. So, they're not divorced from the grade. You don't necessarily see it on the reporting.
Thank you. That's what I meant to say.
I was going to say to go off that, like for example, in my like English class, which is Literature in the Land, before we start a new unit, like we just started our like adventure unit or whatever. So, we have our competencies for that unit at the top of like our daily agenda that we have. And we do writing prompts based off that, like each day in class. So, it kind of connect, ties back up to that. So, even if we're not getting like a, like necessary grade on that certain competency, you are in your work that you're doing around it because it's all kind of like the overarching umbrella thing.
Denise?
I, I know that, that conference that I went to several years ago, the biggest concern wasn't, you're right about the colleges, but it was actually the NCAA had not caught up yet to the idea of competencies. I don't know where the NCAA is with that. And that would be interesting to find out. You know, if, if in fact, because I know five years ago, they were not there. It was, it was a huge issue for students that plan to, you know, pursue Division One and they needed to have those traditional grades to meet the NCAA standards. Hopefully, that isn't the case anymore because I know more and more schools are going more competency-based. But I, I would be curious to know if someone has the answer to that.
Yeah, I'm curious about that as well because I know other high schools that have students that go onto the NCAA that have competency-based grading. So, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'd have to look into that a little bit more.
I have a quick question. As the parent of younger kids, I know that Power School is locked unless it's a grading system. So, if there's a teacher at the high school, from a rising eighth grader, that's only using Power School, how do I track that progress if there's not going to be?
So, you can log into Power School and you can just, you can see the assignments and you, and you can see the numerical grade that's attached to that assignment. But if you had questions beyond that, you'd have to go into Schoology or you'd have to reach out, or talk to this, your student or reach out to the teacher specifically.
Can that be tracked daily or weekly? So, like I said, with the middle school and the elementary school, at the semester, they unlock it for a week unless I misunderstand the process.
Every day. You can go in, you can look at it every day. I don't suggest that or recommend that, but you could if you would like to go in every day and look at it. One of the, one of the things we hope at the high school level is that kids start to take ownership of some of those pieces. And so, we encourage parents to look, but not, not necessarily daily.
Two questions at the high school. One, for the numerical grades, are things like submitting assignments on time now factored into what shows up on the report card?
Can you, can you, can you say that again?
The, one of the, the uncertainties or criticisms of the, of the competency base is that, you know, a, a child can turn their assignment in late and they even, they show later that they've met that expectation, but they haven't shown the, I guess, the habit of work and learning to be able to meet deadlines that you might find in the real world.
So, that is going to be based on what the teacher's expectations are, which are laid out to the students. And I would leave that to Olivia to talk more specifically about her, her experiences with that. But habits of work and learning is part of the grade. So, but I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that.
So, at the beginning of your class, like, like when you start the class, you'll typically go over the syllabus. I believe all classes do this. And they'll, they'll outline like what their policy is on late work. Some teachers deduct points for that and some will let you turn it in until like your next unit test or next summative sort of thing. So, that you're still getting all the work done within the unit, like in a reasonable time. You're not turning it in at like the end of the quarter sort of thing. But it's not really like a competency-based, you're not meeting the deadline. So, then you're going to, like it, it differs from teacher to teacher.
It's in the grade?
Yeah.
In contrast to the middle school where they're separate.
It, it can be. Now, there are, I do want to point out that every student's a little different. So, some students may have things, teachers may be working with students individually because they need more relearning and reassessment. And if that's the case, then you're going, it's going to vary for that student. So, it's, it's, it's on a case-by-case basis also.
And then you mentioned, you both mentioned that colleges are now quite open to competency-based report cards. What would that look like? You know, how would a, how would a student who had straight meets be evaluated by a, by a college?
So, when colleges receive transcripts from high schools, they also receive basically a, a, a school, it's school information. And it has what your scale is. It has all kinds of information about the school and how to read the transcript because every transcript looks different. Everybody has different scales. Everyone has different ways they calculate GPAs. So, so that is given to the schools along with the transcript so they can understand your transcript. Because there's so much variation, what many colleges and universities tend to do is they tend to recalculate when kids send it in. So, they look at that and they figure out what this means in, in relationship to what they're looking for. And so, if you want to have a conversation, I'm happy to talk about that separately because I think that's a bigger conversation and we need to have counselors here for that discussion because they're the ones that work directly with colleges and universities. And they're the ones that, that work on the transcript as well. So, I think that if you're interested in, in getting more, more, diving a little more deeply into that, we can do that.
I think especially as we start to think of what a blended model would look like or as the competencies show up more on the report cards, it would be important to understand that.
And the college, the college process is, is so very different now than, than years ago. So, having just gone through it with my son, I can say that it's very different now than when I applied. So, I'm going to just come back to this and just say, looking ahead next year for the, for the high school, what we're really, we want to continue, we're going to continue our current practices for reporting. We don't see any differences for next year. However, we do want to bring back the grading and reporting committee to continue that work. We want to have, have faculty continue to explore Schoology. We want to continue that conversation with Celeste and Janet to make sure there's that link between the middle school and the high school also. And then continue the work around competencies themselves and mapping, K through 12 mapping, curriculum mapping. So, so some, I think that the work for the high school really is to pick up where they left off when the pandemic hit.
Is it moving towards a blended system also where that's not in this next?
That hasn't, that's not, I think that they're, they're, that's, I think they're looking at all systems, right? So, so, but.
I would say that a blended grading system is no less than two school years out in terms of a proposal and the, the work that Rebecca's doing with the staff will be to create a consistent approach to the competencies and the connection to the middle school competencies. It, we're, we're not close to that yet unless a lot of work gets done very quickly. And I don't think that's, they're just in the beginning stages.
Can there be a short-term process then to prepare the eighth graders for moving from a summative assessment to a more test and quiz model?
So, we use the same language of summative and formative. We use, we use some of the same language. So, the, the biggest difference is the numeric attachment to learning. And that is something that Jay and I used to talk a lot about, how to transition kids. And I think, I think that, I think you're right, that conversation needs to be had again. How are we transitioning kids from fourth to fifth? And how are we transitioning them from eighth to ninth? So, that's definitely something that Becca and Jay and Jay and the elementary schools can work on. Any other questions?
How do you see the role of the reporting structure with regards to student motivation?
So, I think that there are layers to that question, Michael. I think that one of the things we tend to think is that if kids get a low grade, they're motivated and that's a punitive way of motivating kids. And we can talk about intrinsic and extrinsic motivation, reward motivation. There's a lot of work done on positive behavior motivation. So, you motivate people through positive reinforcement and goals, being goal-oriented through, through work. And there's a lot of research behind that. The punitive way would be, you know, to say, well, you didn't hand something in, you get a zero. Well, the zero really says that you didn't hand it in or does it say you have zero knowledge? And is that really going to motivate someone if they see a 16 on, in Power School? For some kids, it might. For a lot of kids that I've worked with, it's not a motivator, it's an avoider. So, you know, I think that that's a bigger conversation about motivation. What motivates people? What motivates kids? What, how do we, how do we ensure motivation? And I think it's going to vary depending on, depend on the student. But there is research around that and around positive, positive, positive versus punitive motivation and relevancy. Like, understand, you know, a lot of times kids ask, why am I even learning this? What's the relevance? How is this going to, you know, and that relevancy question is, is a huge motivator. If they feel passionate about something and they see the relevance, which is what John Bromley was talking about, they're going to be motivated.
Michael, were you, were you thinking primarily of the punitive side? Or I thought you might also be thinking, you know, it's in some cases, kids work for As and that's the positive reinforcement that they, that they get.
So, I, I have a lot of questions behind that. Why, what, there's, I have additional questions about that, but.
But I think it's, it's like you said earlier when you were talking about the middle school, that there are these various different stakeholder groups and different ways that, that reporting is used. There, there's ways it's used internally within the school system with reporting that goes to the state or the federal government, to parents, but also students. And, and what that means is it, is it how I'm using it to inform my own educational planning and how I use my time in class? Is it how I compete with the student that's sitting next to me on how well we did on the last, you know, social studies test? So, it is, it is, the answer is yes. Both ends of the spectrum. And, and it's, I think it's, it's got to be a consideration. Not, not for every student, but certainly for some.
And I think that's why the student voice is really important when you have these conversations too.
Yeah.
Kind of going off of all that, I have had experience my eighth grade year with like more of a competency-based grading system, but we more of a competency based grading system. But we had like ones, twos, threes and fours instead of your meetings. Like that was your like meetings, like Excel, that sort of thing. And I felt really unmotivated with that because it was like you would get a three, like four would be the best, like the best technically. And that would be excelling at your, whatever you're learning. So technically a three would be, you're doing good, you're on the right track sort of thing. But for me, that seemed like I wasn't where I wanted to be at that four level sort of thing. And I had the rest of my middle school, I had always been used to like the As, Bs and Cs sort of thing. But personally, out of all the different forms of grading that I've had, I've enjoyed the way that Oyster River has done the kind of like mix of both of them where on my rubrics, I can see I'm excelling in this area on my writing part or whatever, I'm meeting here. So this is the area that I need to work in, but I'm still getting that 90 or whatever on my essay because overall it was worth that higher level grade and it wasn't worth that like, because I would still like in my head, even if you're not supposed to convert them, like for the, I know a lot of my peers would still like be like, oh, so a four is basically a 100, a three, that sort of thing. So even if we're saying that we're not attaching the grade values, people will still attach the grade values until this is the norm, I guess. So that's kind of, it may just be like a transitional thing. But overall, kind of going off of the motivation thing, I felt unmotivated with, if I'm meeting this and I'm doing good at it, then why am I not like doing, excelling at it? Even if like, that sort of thing. I don't know. But that's my thoughts on that.
You'll be happy to know there's tons of parents who are also assigning letter grades to meets, excels.
Yes, yes.
I did, we talked about that at the faculty meeting today too, about assigning numbers to, yeah. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you Suzanne.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. First of all, I want to recognize Olivia. You know, we all know that she's our first Barrington student rep. And she got to go back to her school system and do a presentation to them this past week, right, Tuesday? And I got a call from the superintendent today saying that she really did a fantastic job. So she definitely has been the ambassador that we hoped that she would be. And besides being a fantastic Oyster River High School student, she also is the person from Barrington. And she went back and shared her experience with them and it was incredibly well received. So thank you, Olivia.
Good job.
I do want to follow up with Rebecca's comment on teacher appreciation. This is Teacher Appreciation Week and our teachers do a fantastic job and they certainly deserve our appreciation. I want to remind the board that, oh, no, I'm not going to remind the board, I'm going to inform the board. The Southeast Superintendents Association, which is this regional bevy of superintendents, will be meeting at the new middle school tomorrow. And the purpose of that is because we host one month every year. And I thought that the best place to host them would be at the new middle school. So that'll be pretty exciting. They're all looking forward to student tours. When we bring people into the building, our kids are giving them sustainability tours. And it's really incredible. I did one with them and I said I would do it with them only if I got to share what I knew as well. And I said, now you can go back to your teacher and share what you know that she doesn't know. And it was great fun. Senator Hassan and Representative Pappas had a tour from, tours from our students last week. Senator Shaheen informed us today that she's coming in on Friday at 10:00 AM to tour the new facility. And of course, we all know Senator Shaheen lives in Medbury. She's a resident of the district. So that's pretty exciting. Next week, on the 12th, the state board asked to meet at the new middle school. And the issue for the state board is they have not allowed public comment for about two years. And so this is the first meeting, unfortunately, that they've opened up public comment. And Michael asked me to, you know, go through a process of making sure the building's secure because, in fact, we have students that day. And so what we did is I sat down with Mike Nicolosi, our SRO, and then contacted the chief, talked to the commissioner. Typically, they, they get about three or four people who attend their meetings. So there is a co-drive entrance into the recital hall that will be the entrance that we will use for visitors that day. And they will not be coming in through the main lobby mixing with kids. However, the same exercise we've done with the senators, we would do with the state board members. And we'll have Sustainability Student Club students provide tours for the state board and talk about the building. Suzanne will be ready to greet them and she'll share a few words from me and a few of her own. The Durham Police Department will provide two officers, one to monitor that entrance and one to monitor the inside of the room. So any guests that come who want to do public comment will be restricted to that room. If there's any activist groups, they'll be limited to the co-drive side of the building, which is away from the students. And we'll, we'll have signage to direct people. Suzanne's going to be there. Jay's going to be there as well. We'll use the same security procalls that we use when anybody enters the building, which is they sign in, they get a name tag. That's so we know who's in the building. And if there's an emergency, like, you know, we needed to evacuate the building, we would then be able to know whether those people We're going to restrict the visitors to the first three rows in the recital hall, largely because it's easier for Officer Nicolosi to be able to then scan the audience. Talked about that. The commissioner and his staff, which probably would be, and the state board is probably about 10 people total, they'll come in through the front entrance. They'll also have to sign in, name tags. There's a bathroom right off the strings classroom. We'll restrict that bathroom for adult use that day. We'll be providing food and refreshments that will be in the recital hall. They're not going to be eating in the learning commons. No visitors will be given tours. They're there to do their public comment to the state board. And parking will be along the driveway or right in front of the school. Jay has spots for visitors. And really, that's, that's pretty much the plan. I did get a call from the NEA New Hampshire president today wanting to know how they could respectfully protest. And I said, yeah, we have it under control. I explained all this to her. She's very aware that it's a student day. They're not intending to do anything that's disruptive, but they do want to send a message to the state board. And I said, fine, we have that all set up. And I expect that with these precautions and with Officer Nicolosi in charge, Suzanne will spend the day there with them along with Jay. If they need anything, she'll be right there. I expect that it should be an okay day. Any questions on that?
Thank you for the precautions. Did I understand the protest areas would be on co-drive, but the commissioner and his staff are entering through the main entrance?
Yeah. Just to, you know, don't want to get into any disruptive stuff by the school.
Jim, aren't they entering through the side and not the main entrance?
Let the commissioner and his staff come in through the front entrance and they go right into, you know, the secure entrance, which puts them in the doorway to the recital hall by the band room. Josh is doing all, Josh and Alex will do all of the preparations for the state board visit in terms of technology. It is a streamed event. And so that's, that's ongoing. Doris is taking care of the food piece of it. So I think it should be a pleasant visit and, and it shouldn't disrupt our school day at all. That's my hope. And I think we put enough precautions in place. So that should be the case. Any questions on that? I do want to take the time also to go back to something Misty said and, and the loss of a student at the high school over vacation. As educators, you know, we live to support children and be there for them. And so we certainly sent our sympathy and support to the family. Our crisis team met immediately in terms of, once we learned and put together the plan. You saw the letter I sent out and letters that followed up in terms of providing resources to families. I have to say that the larger community received those letters and that support very well. We didn't end up with a lot of, or any actually, any pushback whatsoever. I think parents appreciate it when our counselors pull together the resources that can, they can use to talk to their children. One of the decisions we made was that those communications only went to adults to allow the, the adults to have tough conversations with their children. Typically, Olivia, for example, would have gotten the same conversation as, same information as the adults, but we restricted it this time to her parents and the parents across the district because we didn't want to be in a place where we were having a really difficult conversation via texting or email that we felt was better done at home. So I want to commend the crisis team for the work they did and Suzanne in particular in coordinating all of that. Then going into the things that I said I was going to talk about, kindergarten enrollment remains pretty stable. That's in, in terms of numbers. Right now at MoHaramit, we have 53 enrolled students and two pending. And at Masway, we have 62 registered kindergarten kits. So that hasn't changed dramatically. If David and Misty were at the microphone, they'd say it's going to. But right now, it's been pretty stable.
I do have a question about that. I, MoHaramit, as far as I can tell, looks fine. I wonder about Masway. And are you anticipating that there could be an issue? Because that, it just seems like classes are really full and, yeah.
Denise, are you speaking about kindergarten in particular?
Yes. Kindergarten, and because keeping the, it looks like you'll still need to keep four kindergarten classrooms.
Correct.
And you won't, like at MoHaramit, it looks like you can take a fourth teacher that's currently in kindergarten, women to first grade, but that doesn't seem like that's going to work for Masway. So I'm just wondering if you're anticipating, you know, are you able, do you think you'll be able to shift enough staff around? Or are you thinking that you might need another teacher, I guess is the question?
I do, I do know that we will need four kindergarten teachers. And I do know it's a fluid situation. We have had more registrations since I've given numbers to the SAU. So, you know, as you know, kindergarten is ongoing, sort of moving target. I am not anticipating a concern at this point if we have four teachers.
Yeah. And you have enough for the other, because I was looking at it and it, right, currently you only have three first grade.
Correct. I will also need four first grade teachers.
Right.
That's right. So that's where the, that's where we just put our heads together between retirements and hires and folks who are willing to change grade levels. I think that's something that happens on a regular basis in the smaller schools like Masway and MoHaramit. We just have to kind of shuffle folks around. We'll certainly hire to replace, we have a big loss with Whitney Burke retiring and we'll certainly replace her. And then we'll move things around and see where we're at.
Right now, Denise, we feel like we have sufficient staff to meet the needs by just reassigning people. So as we go, get closer to the end of the school year, we'll bring you back an update and we'll share exactly where we see our classes going. One of the things I would just remind the board is that we no longer provide placements at registration. And that has been a godsend in terms of placement. We do our placements in August now. And that gives David and Misty the ability with Lisa Hop to make sure that children are placed geographically. So it may be that you see 62 registrations at Masway, but three of them may end up at MoHaramit. So that, that really has provided an immense amount of flexibility in terms of placement. And then in terms of the upper grade, is it fourth grade, David?
Yes.
Fourth grade, where his numbers are really high. So any new registration for that grade could end up at Masway. So we, we've learned over time how best to make those placements without being disruptive. The, in the older days, five years ago, we made all of those decisions in June, thinking we were being helpful to parents. And it just turned into a busing and parent nightmare. So by doing it the way we're doing it now, people understand that the school they register at may not be the school that they end up at.
So even, even with that, if we have more than about 10 or 12 more registrations, we would be at the point of considering an eighth kindergarten teacher.
Exactly.
Between the two schools.
And we would need to make that decision by the end of this school year to give any chance of hiring someone who we would want to be in that kindergarten. And we will get plenty of applications for that grade. But that was the other thing we've learned over time, Michael, to wait until August is silly. You know, we have to jump in June. And if we're right, great. And if we're wrong, they just end up with smaller classes. So it's, it's not the end of the world. All right. And then Sue, are you going to pick up the sustainability report from the strategic plan?
Yeah.
So I can speak to the education side on the sustainability summary. We made some adjustments at the start of this year as far as what the work would look like. We do have coordinator job descriptions. We have not identified four coordinators. However, we do have people within each school building that's interested in the sustainability work. We, next year, the goal really is to identify four teacher leaders and to work with them to develop, to develop some, some ways and of getting some PD into the, to faculty and staff about integrating sustainable concepts within their curriculum that they're, that they're teaching. And so that's the work that we were, we would work, do next year, which was one of the things that the intern, the report, the sustainability report talks about and addresses. So that is having those teacher leaders work with me to identify, how can we push this into the classroom in an integrated way? What would that look like? And, and that will take the, take the year to do that work. But I think we're, we're making progress on the education side. I know that Sarah O'Brien at the middle school and John Bromley at the high school have been, continue to be very active with students with their work around sustainability. And we do have a motivated student, students who are very interested in sustainability. So.
Question for you and Sue. I know that the committee was planning with your leadership to tighten up the recommendations a bit from the, from that extensive report and put some priorities and timelines.
So we did do that. We have an action plan that we did within each of those areas and we shared it with the sustainability committee. And so there are very specific things that we identified for this school year of what, what we would like to do. I'm happy to share that with you if you'd like to see that as well. But that was just mostly for this school year and then we'll look at doing that for next year. That's, that's taking these, these goals here and really dialing it down even more and putting some timeline to it.
You're talking about the sustainability management plan?
Yes. Yep. Sue, I don't know if you want to speak to the operations?
I don't think there was a whole lot different from what we're already doing. Again, we've met as a committee and talked about the sustainability management plan, and we want to look at that and see what we can dig into to further do what we've done in terms of operations for the next year. Of course, without Maggie, who's kind of led the charge, we're still trying to figure out how we're going to replace her and do what she did. And that's, you know, to be determined when we have another meeting and discuss that with the committee, further actions.
In general, I appreciate the way this page was laid out with the summary of the five-year goals and where we are for the last couple of years. Are we going to update the sections that we reviewed last time the same way?
Yes.
For the sustainability management plan, so much went into that in terms of the external resources and internal resources and the, the time that the board went to reviewing it. It would be great to continue to use that, that plan for the priorities and, you know, we are, we've, with Maggie's departure, we've moved to this, this coordinator model across the schools. At some point, it is, it would be important, I think, to evaluate what we've lost with her departure or what the potential is for continuing to have central coordination, you know, what, what incremental improvements we could make with, with those types of resources to be able to, you know, to weigh that as a board.
Sure. Good. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And so next time, next meeting, we have the final major section, which is technology for the strategic plan.
Yes. I believe that was so, that was, that was it, Michael?
All right.
Jim, did you want to say something about the community sessions next week?
Oh, thank you. So, yeah, the finalists for the DEIJ positions will be in the district on the ninth and 11th. Suzanne has put together a very comprehensive agenda for them to meet the faculty, to meet the DEIJ committee, and to meet the community. And the community schedule is...
My computer just died on me, so I have all these numbers in my head right now. They're going to arrive, the, the candidates would arrive around 10 o'clock. They're going to go through each school and have a tour of each school and meet the principals and faculty within the schools. And then they will also have a lunch, oh, we adjusted some of these times from our...
But I'm sure that you've got...
Thank you so very much. So we then would have them meeting, eating lunch with students, which, which will be wonderful. And then after school, they would have an opportunity to meet with faculty and speak with faculty, speak with the DEIJ coordinate, uh, community team, and then also meet with community members. And that, that would be the end of their day, and that would be from 5:45 to 6:30 would be the community piece. And we will be sending information out to everybody through school messenger, just inviting people to come to that. And I'm working with Wendy right now and sending that out.
Where, where will that be? Where will the meeting?
So that will be at the middle school in the learning commons. So the faculty meeting, the candidate, the DEIJ community group meeting with the candidate, and the community will all take place at the middle school.
So will that be a setting, the, the community meeting, is that a setting where there'd be a presentation? Or is this a, is this a small group meet and greet?
So we'll have a 15-minute presentation where they're introducing themselves and talking about their interest in the district. And then it'll have a 15-minute sort of question and answer time, and then, and then a 15-minute informal conversation where people can mingle and have some conversations with them that way. If they don't feel comfortable asking a question in front of a large group, it would give them the opportunity to have that conversation with them one-on-one.
Who will moderate the Q and A?
So that would be me.
Do we have audio in the learning commons?
That is actually on my list to look at and to talk to Jay about. I can't answer that question.
He's nodding his head.
So.
We can, yes.
If we need to shift the location, we can always change the location if it's not the best location. So we're really excited to have the candidates come.
Anything else, Jim?
That will do it, Michael. Thank you.
All right. Sue, anything for the business administrator? Not, not tonight? Olivia, student representative report.
Hi. I have a lot of upcoming dates of things going on. Got a lot coming up this past, this, this month and more. First things that I have is the World Language Honor Society inductions are going to be on May 12th. So that's pretty exciting. I get to be inducted into French National Honor Society.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you say that in French?
Um, I'll get back to you on that. And then our, well, the Senate had planned their, calling it the Spring Fling, which is going to be our social type event, similar to our fall festival that we had. That's going to be on May 13th, so next Friday, yep, next Friday. And then underclassmen awards, Ms. Noe already mentioned this, but it's going to be on May 16th. And then the NHS induction is going to be on May 19th. The high school music concert is going to be May 25th. Prom is May 26th. And then I want to reiterate again that our school musical is going to be this Thursday through Saturday, and definitely go check it out if you have a chance. I hear that the cast is very great, and I know that they've put a lot of hard work into And then just a reminder for seniors to sign up for project graduation. And the senior art show is in the works. I'm not 100% sure on dates, but I'll get back to you when I know those. It's probably going to be sometime towards the end of May, beginning of June, I assume. I'm not 100% sure. Student government applications have, they're either going out or they have gone out already. And so students are interested in being on the senate president, vice president of their class, or taking my position and being the school board rep. Yes, for next year. So those are in the works also. So then voting will come shortly after, I assume. And, yeah. What else? Oh, senior week, we, I'm not 100% sure on all the details. Like Ms. Noe said, she's going to send out a thing on the exacts on that, but that will be our last week of school, the week of June 10th. And, yeah, that's all I got. Any questions? Awesome.
Sprint to the finish. All right. Thank you, Olivia. Let's see, it's nine o'clock. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll pick up with the finance committee report right after that.
All right, we are back. So we are up to the Finance Committee report. So Brian, that's yours.
Yep. We had our first meeting of the year. Apparently Heather didn't get the memo that the first meeting, the newest person has to bring snacks. That didn't happen, but we'll let it slide this time. Just remember for next time. So first thing we did, we actually had a meeting with New Hampshire Electric Co-op, which actually was a pretty good lengthy meeting. Reason why we asked to meet with our -- Jim brought them in to meet with us was through that whole process we've been through with electric buses over the last couple of years, we never -- it's always kind of been run by Nuvi and everybody else, because Nuvi kind of puts the package together, but we didn't really understand how New Hampshire Co-op really fit into the -- as their piece of the pie. So it was really enlightening to kind of hear how they -- why they're different than any other company and why we have to utilize them versus another company to work with this program. And it actually was very good conversation overall on how they set the rates, how the program actually works on the electric side versus the bus side. So that was kind of enlightening, because they are co-op, they can do a lot more than whatever source and other companies can do. So basically what we decided after that was we'd like to look farther down that road still eventually to see if it's still a cost-effective plan, but we kind of wanted to -- it was too much of a data dump last time when they came to us. We kind of wanted to spread that out and kind of get us to put our heads together, to put it all together and understand it better, because it was just too much, too fast, and too salesy, I guess you could say, when we met with them before. So we're going to try to cut all that out and get to the meat and potatoes of it and see if it's still a worthwhile option. We're not saying it is, we're not saying it isn't, we just don't know at this point, we're just starting the process. So we just wanted to keep you informed there. The next part, we talked about the current budget we're in now, as of right now. We're actually on pace to have a big enough fund balance where we won't have to dig into our emergency funds. So I think we'll have enough to cover that. We did get our final numbers for next budget year on our health insurance. We ended up picking up about $79,000 of savings there. What we're actually going to be looking at at our next meeting is probably where is best to utilize those funds. For example, you know, one of the things we were discussing that we'll probably bring to you back for decision is the half-science teacher at the high school. That really is probably the most effective, for the amount of money we have, it's one of the more effective positions that we can do. So, and let's see, I'm on the wrong one.
Brian, did the committee talk about, I really get the science teacher, but also the, I guess the alternative is reducing the amount we take from the emergency funds for next year?
Sorry, say that again?
We don't need to, the fund balance from this year.
From this year, but for next year?
No, we'll cover next year's, the poll from next year that we had proposed. There'll be enough left over from this year to -- sorry, Brian, you should answer this.
Originally, we were planning on using $500,000 in the fund balance for this year. Since our fund balance is big enough, we don't need to do that. Next year, obviously, we won't know until the end of next year. So we are hoping it'll be the same, but we won't, I wouldn't even go down that path until 10 months from now, 12 months from now.
We passed a budget that assumed sort of up to $900,000, but knowing that there would be, expecting that there would be savings from the insurance, that we wouldn't be spending everything on insurance that we budgeted. Perhaps this is a discussion for next time, but I wondered, I wondered, one option is simply not to spend the funds for next year, right? Because we had committed to going so, drawing so much from the emergency funds?
Well, $79,000 out of $900,000 is not a lot, and I wouldn't start deciding where that money goes today without probably a deeper discussion.
So we, we have to, in August, I think, is that the one, the MS 25 or 26 has to be filed?
September 1st, MS 25 has to be filed.
So the MS 20, Sue's going to explain this better than I would have.
So when we get to August and do the MS 25, we'll know exactly what the fund balance is, and I'll do the MS 24, which is the revenue report. So I expect that the $500,000 in fund balance will be covered, and the $900,000 that we thought we would have to take out of the emergency fund will also be covered with what we have left over in total. Yes.
Wow.
That's what we're trending towards now.
On the flip side, oh, go ahead.
No, and I was going to say, the $79,000 is next year's budget was a whole nother issue, which was the savings from the 2.5%, 4.5% we budgeted for health insurance to the 2.5. So that's a different budget, different animal.
So we have to post a budget that matches what was approved by the voters.
Right.
So we have to shift things, because we know that health insurance is not going to be as much of an expense next year as what we had originally proposed, we have to, we still have to shift that around and show a budget, a spending plan that matches that same bottom line that was approved in March. Now, once we get into the year, we don't have to actually spend all that money, but we have to have a budget that matches that.
We have to incorporate all that money.
Yeah, we have to, we have to, so that's what, that's what, that savings in health spending for next year needs to be reallocated somewhere else in the, in the budget.
It needs to be put in a line. It doesn't necessarily have to be spent.
Right, we could put it in capital expenditure.
Or even spent in that particular area.
But we could put it in a, in a fund, couldn't we?
No, you have to do it by ballot.
It's got to be part of the expenditure report, part of the expenditure, okay. Because, yeah, I mean, I would definitely be really hesitant at this early to be talking about, you know, I just think there's too many other things that, if we're talking about next year's budget, like, I just think it's too early.
Well, keep in mind, next year's budget starts in two months.
Yes, I know, but.
So, but those are the main topics we really went over. We just laid a groundwork for preparing for the next budget, but a lot of the information we need doesn't come out for a while. For example, adequacy, some of the expense, obviously, we won't know, health insurance expenses, which is big, you know, I think retirement.
Retirement, so, Brian, the retirement system will tag us for money that would, that could tax us pretty heavily.
Although there's still the bill where the state may pick up 7.5%, which I believe is about to pass. I've been told it passed, but I haven't found it online. So, but yeah, if it is, that's going to save a ton of money for the district, because the state is going back to what they used to do, which is pick up part of the tab of the retirement, which for us would be 7.5% on the school side, not the employee side. So that would be a pretty, that is pie in the sky right now, until that actually gets put on paper and we get told. I don't count that money. So, so really, it's, we laid the groundwork, kind of got an idea of what we do, how we do it, and we're going to pretty much follow a pretty same footprint we did last year as far as wading through all the, all the gobbledygook and getting to the main meat and potatoes, and then bring it to you to kind of see where we prioritize, decide, and, you know, we're kind of, we'd like to do a little bit different as far as deciding what our goal is. I think we wanted to get more, so just picking a number, kind of get a reason why we get to that number. So that's also a discussion we were looking to have. So really, it's just setting the, just setting the plan and setting our next meeting and getting, getting going. So, so we've got a lot on our plate that will be coming up, and then obviously, as we get in the budget season, we'll be super busy, and then after budget season, we can relax a little bit. So.
So we should have distributed the minutes to the full board, and we forgot that this time, as we get back into this rhythm. So we'll, the minutes from the Finance Committee, we should have distributed to the full board afterwards, and we, we got into that rhythm last year, and we, as we're reorganizing, just forgot.
We took them manually. So did you do, did you give them to Wendy? Okay, so we have them.
Yeah.
We'll get them typed out.
And that's pretty much it until we meet again. So, unless I forgot something. Don't forget anything.
So the next meeting is May 24th, I think.
24th, yep.
So we will not have anything new from Finance next time, and then in June, we will be starting to look at the budget calendar for the fiscal year 2024 budget process. Yes, I said 2024.
Feels like we just finished the last budget.
Thanks, Brian. We have just the policies on the unanimous consent agenda tonight. Are there any of those anybody would like to discuss separately? So then, in that case, I will move for approval of unanimous consent agenda, including for approval for second read and adoption of policy J I C H, student drug and alcohol use, I H B I, alternative learning plans, and I M B C, alternative credit options. We have a second from Brian. All is in favor of approving the unanimous consent agenda. Fix in favor, the unanimous consent agenda, those policies are approved. All right, so discussion items. The first item here is the board meeting calendar for 2022, 2023. This is an item that requires board approval, although not, it's not a policy, so it's a single approval. There, so this was presented last meeting. There is, there's a couple of changes here. This includes a proposal to shift the first meeting in October from a Wednesday to a Thursday, and it includes a meeting each at Massway in the fall and Mohairamit in the spring. Jim, was there anything else?
No, you had asked me to check against major holy days, and that's why we shifted the Wednesday to a Thursday. We looked at going to a Tuesday, but that same holiday impacted both days. And typically, this is where we meet with Barrington, so we'd have to reach out to Barrington to make sure that they were also willing to meet on the 6th. So we need to do that outreach.
What I think we should do is we should just remove that line from the, from the calendar until we have a confirmed date with Barrington.
Okay.
We can really fit them in anywhere, right, for the most part?
Yeah.
Or make it a separate meeting if we had to.
Right. And I did, I did try to connect with, with Chair Gibson. Our spring break vacations did not line up, so we have not talked yet. So we would be looking for a motion to approve this. Brian?
Motion to approve as presented, with the changes?
Minus Barrington, minus the Barrington meeting that's not confirmed yet.
Right.
Yeah. And a second from Denise, for the discussion. All is in favor? Fix in favor, the meeting calendar for next year is approved. All right, and then the next item is the school hours for next school year. We talked about this last time extensively. There's a memo in the packet from Mr. Goldsmith, I believe, and Misty and Ms. Lowe about start times. Jim, are you going to go over this?
Invite David and Misty up. So part of the complexity of our start days really involves around the elementary schools, and they actually have sort of what I would describe as two soft starts before they have a hard start. And this is a question that Michael was asking me to answer, and I felt inadequate to the task. So I asked David and Misty to capture how their school day starts and what the official day is. And in addition to the memo, we have the proposed start times behind it. So David and Misty, you just want to try to do this how school starts at the elementary school and why we have three start times before we hit the hard time?
Sure. The basic premise to everything that happens at the elementary school is that we have five-year-olds in our building, and all the way up to 10-year-olds. And the moment they come onto our campus, they need to be supervised. They don't just come into the building and go meander through the library, or go find a teacher, or go take care of their own things. We track them from the moment they get off the bus, or the moment they get out of their car, and they walk safely into school, because the learning begins right then. That is the S E L, executive functioning kind of learning that happens in the elementary school during classes and in all of the times outside and around all of the classes. If you consider reading a class, or math, or P E, or something like that, this is what's happening. So if we say that the school day starts at nine, but students need to come into the building prior to that, then all of our faculty and staff need to be on duty from the moment we say that time begins. So in the memo you see, we say 8:50 is when we allow drop-off doors to open, it's when buses are allowed to open their doors, and everybody has to be in their places so the students can start to be supervised right away. And then it really just proceeds that way. So it takes a while for kids to get into their classrooms. They have to learn to hang up their backpack, and take out a folder, and put away their rain boots, and take off rain boots, and put on their other shoes. And then in the winter, there are snow pants, and all of those things, that's a very serious amount of learning.
That's all after breakfast.
And they're doing that while seeing their friends, and being excited to tell their teacher something, and some kids are at breakfast, and all of those different layers are happening. So for that entire time, teachers are providing work for kids who are ready to sit down and focus on something. That work might transition them from what they've been doing at home, it might connect to what they did the day before, it might be review or practice. Other kids are in the cafeteria getting breakfast. This year, we had huge numbers of students getting breakfast, and we don't have five breakfast waves the way we have lunch waves, so it's all happening at once while other students are in the classroom. So we have to have staff in those places for students. Then we have to help them get from the cafeteria to their classrooms, and then they have to reintegrate into the classroom. While other students have already done their unpacking, they need to unpack. And then we have announcements, and throughout that whole time, that gets us ready for, and it gives teachers, the classroom teachers, the time to transition their students to be mindful and ready for the learning day. So we have all of these different times. 8:50, the doors open, 9 o'clock, school day starts, kids are tardy by 9:10, that's when we do our announcements, and at 9:15, that's when we consider academic time starting. So we say the day starts at nine, and it really does, learning begins at nine, but when we sit down with staff to talk about 90 minutes of math and this amount of reading, we usually, this year, we've been using a 9:15 time, that's when kids are in the room. Dismissal is the exact same thing but opposite. We can't just say at the end of the day, "Have a nice day," because five-year-olds have to get home safely. They have to know what they're doing. 10-year-olds need to know what they're doing, and everybody in between, when notes change, when buses are in a different order, when the pickup note is still shoved in the bottom of the backpack and didn't come out, all of those things, we need to make sure that that all happens properly and compassionately and thoughtfully, so that kids aren't a mess, you know, aren't struggling at the end of the day because they don't know what their routines are. So we have a very slow, methodical dismissal routine. We dismiss after-school activity groups, we dismiss the after-school daycare programs, we dismiss people going to their cars, then we dismiss buses, and we have to do that in such a way that students can be supervised while they're either waiting for their bus or getting on their bus. So we don't just dismiss all the buses, because we have to have kids in lines being supervised to wait to get on those buses. That's the basic thing, and that's, that's consistent at both buildings.
Very consistent. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah. The times might be a little different for the buses based on when they arrive at Mohairamit or when they arrive at Massway, but that whole routine is pretty similar.
And they would say that the, the piece that we were trying to save from COVID is the fact that we created dedicated runs to the elementaries and dedicated runs to 5 through 12. And what that does is it cuts down on the amount of time that the buses are rolling in. So literally, in this process, at least half the buses are sitting at Massway and Mohairamit's door, so that when David and Misty start dismissing, they're not waiting for buses coming from the high school or middle school, and.
That's the plan for next year?
Yeah, for next year. And, and the drivers, in terms of driver safety and distraction, really felt strongly that this was a better approach for students. We all agree it's a better approach for students. And so the proposed times reflect the two soft and one hard start that David and Misty have to go through every single day, and they are presented in the second memo.
Denise?
So I guess the only thing, everything makes sense. The end of the day currently goes until 3:35, and the proposal is to change that to 3:25, taking off the 10 minutes. And I know one of the things that we've talked about, is we've talked about introducing world language into elementary school, is how are we going to fit it in? So I'm just wondering, did you consider keeping the end of the school day at 3:35 so that you could preserve that six hours and 20 minutes?
No, we didn't, for, for a variety of reasons, Denise. I think a world language conversation has to be separate from our current start and end times and our needs. The start and end time this year is based off of the busing needs that we had based on COVID, based on last year when we had hybrid models, and an AM and a PM and all of that. This proposal for next year is an increase from what it was pre-COVID.
Right.
But it is getting, if, as our buses are organized in this way, it's getting everybody out by 3:30, so that students can make all of their after-school activities, so that all of those pieces work, so that staff can attend end-of-the-day meetings. When we try to mix with middle school and high school, those times have to balance. There are all those different variables to go into that. So it's 10 minutes, and it's amazing how powerful 10 minutes can be to get people where they need to go. I think, you know, I know Dr. Morse has restarted the World Language Committee, and in that, that conversation, that would be the place to figure out how that impacts the day. And I know the board already talked about that in the past in terms of what it would mean for needs, but we didn't talk about that as part of this process.
I think your, your point's well taken, seeing it over multiple years, because if we're, if we shrink and then expand, the difference seems a lot greater than if, than if the baseline were.
Can I just say one thing? I feel like we're in sort of a weird place, because it wasn't on our agenda to mess with times. We had to, because of COVID. And now our experience is with those times, but we had a whole system that was cruising, cruising right along pre-COVID. And within that system, we had lots of conversations about schedule, time, how much time we had. We talked about how it was challenging at that time to fit everything into the day, but we weren't banging the drum of saying, "Let's add time to our day," and do all that sort of thing. So I feel like it's a little bit of a weird spot to be in, because we had no choice but to do things for COVID, and now that's sort of a base expectation when it's a little off. Because I said before, when we were just talking about the schedule, and I'll say it again, time is, we already have a lot to teach, and the state adds more things for us to teach, and that time conversation is just exceptionally complicated and tricky around what we're already doing before we even add new things. But this is just about how do we get our kids in and out of the buildings, and how do we get our staff to work in a way that is really functional to the best of our students' needs and our staff's needs, I think. So it's just, I just wanted to put that, it just seems a little awkward to me.
It seemed that the staff contract and expectations for, for that was also an important part of the conversation. What did that look like, pre-COVID, COVID, and post-COVID, in terms of the number of hours, I guess, that the staff are expected to be in the building, or?
It's not in the contract.
The unit of, the, the, the unit of expectation for working day.
So that's right here in the second piece that I gave you. The pre-COVID bus times for the elementary were 8:40 to 8:55. The school day was 9:10 to 3:10, and David and Misty applied the same kind of standard that he just discussed in relation to the soft times and then the hard start. So.
And we've always worked as a professional organization with the Guild and the other unions, when we have meetings that start at 7:45 in the morning or that go at until the afternoon, that's part of the professional day, and there's been an expectation that we all work as professionals.
So when you mentioned last week, you were talking about the doors open time to the second wave time. So for post-COVID, it's 8:50 to 3:30. That's where you were able to fund the savings?
Yeah, the, the efficiency in the current system really cuts down the wait time for buses. It wasn't unusual for David and Misty, pre-COVID, to be waiting for buses over a 40-minute period. It wasn't unusual for David and Misty pre-COVID to be waiting for buses over a 40-minute period. And that's an enormously long time to be waiting for buses, because if you take what David and Misty shared in terms of how they start the day and how they end the day, that, that means you have children who are not in, in academic setting, waiting for a bus. And for sure, our teachers, to the best of their ability, keep them entertained, reading stories, singing songs, and so forth. But it's a long wait for buses. And the, what we discovered in COVID is we could cut that wait time down dramatically by dedicating the buses. So really, the efficiency of dedicated buses is, is really on the bus side and on the wait time that students are waiting for buses. Does that make sense?
So with the second wave being the, the, the time that we're looking at as the end of the day?
Exactly. Yeah, so the, the straight question, you see, the answer to your question is, pre-COVID, the academic day for the elementary was six hours. During COVID, it was six hours and 20 minutes. And the recommendation here in terms of the academic day is six hours and 10 minutes.
Michael? There, so when we look at six hours and 10 minutes academic day, that includes lunch, that includes recess.
That's right.
What, how much of that time is included in our number of hours of school that are used for meeting state requirements?
Six and a half hours.
I don't know. The whole thing.
Yeah, so, so the, for elementary school, you can, you can count 30 minutes of recess as part of the day. So if you take away passing time, that's really what you're eliminating on an elementary schedule, is the passing time, which is not academic time. That's really the only time within, because, because recess is 30 minutes, so.
So what do we?
So it's pretty much the majority of the day. So we, we use the maximum allowed.
So do we, like, for this year, we're claiming six hours and 20 minutes a day for elementary? But?
Um, it's about six hours a day. Not the 20, I would say not 6:20.
We exclude lunch, essentially, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay. Is the same true at the middle school and the high school?
Middle school and high school does not count recess, you can't count lunch and recess, so you lose passing time and, and recess.
So we don't count passing time, we don't count lunch?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
So it's, it's, there's, there's similar. We, we always have ample numbers of hours. We're always above the minimum.
We don't want to be at the minimum. This is.
We're not at the minimum. I can tell you that right now. Because I just, I was calculating. I was just calculating with.
It gets under my skin when I hear, "We're, we're way above the minimum." The minimum is not the standard that we're.
No, I'm just saying, you were asking about what we can and can't count.
Right, right.
And so state, so I'm just going by state statute, because that's what you were asking about. So that's never been an, an issue for Oyster River.
Instead of thinking of it as minimum, thinking of it as required.
Expectation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Was that right?
Instead of minimum hours, thinking of it as required.
Right, right.
Required, yes. We are wait, we are, we are above what they're asking.
That sounds better.
Yeah. So we're, we're looking, this is a schedule issue that, that requires board action, so we're looking for board approval of the academic day hours.
Okay.
Is what we're, what we're looking at, right?
Yes.
Denise?
I will go ahead and make a motion to accept the start and end times for the schools as presented.
We have a second from Heather.
So many seconds.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just, not for this year, but for future years, I think it would be worth looking at the feasibility and interest in flipping the start times for the elementary and high school and middle school to get closer to that goal of a later start. Portsmouth has done this already, and so there's a resource that we can use to see how it's going for them, whether it's been good or bad, or, just as a discussion point, it doesn't.
Didn't we work, didn't we work with Portsmouth to do our start times?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Wow.
I don't know what that means.
What's up?
You lost me.
We've already, when we did our start times, we actually worked with Portsmouth as part of the process and.
That's a very rich topic.
Yeah. Deep.
So I guess I would be looking for some board input on whether we want to include that as an agenda item on a, on a meeting sometime in the next several months or not.
When we did the later start at the high school, we did have that conversation. And the feedback from parents was not good. Because the younger kids would be put out waiting for a bus in the dark in the wintertime. And so that was not well received by the parents. But doesn't mean that opinions haven't changed, because we did this work six years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
The other issue, it's the, it's the buses, too, is, I, we did, I mean, we spent like a year on the start times and, you know, looking at all the different possibilities. Not to say that we can't revisit it, but.
Yeah, that's all, not, it doesn't need, we don't need to dig in tonight, because that would be too much. But in future, I think it would be worth having a discussion about it.
I would add, too, that if the federal government follows through on staying on this timeframe, people will be waiting at 7 o'clock in the morning in the dark.
Right, for money, daylight savings, yeah.
So.
That happens.
And that will be for several months, a year.
You see?
I would be interested in districts that made the transition, what they learned.
Yes.
Transitioned to what?
To flipping.
To flipping.
Oh, I don't know of any system in New Hampshire that has done that.
Portsmouth.
I don't.
Portsmouth has an 8 o'clock start time for their elementary.
So it sounds like there's enough interest that this merits inclusion on a future agenda. So we have a motion in a second. I just want to express my appreciation to, to Lisa and the Transportation Department and the principals, and Jim and Suzanne for working through this early. I think it's really helpful to have, know what's going to be happening in the fall for these times at this point in the year. So, hey, further discussion? All those in favor of approving the start time, the school daytime as presented? Six in favor, those are approved for the fall.
Parents will appreciate your action.
All right. The next item is board goals for 2022, 2023. This is really just an introduction. So what you have in the packet is a memo from me that just kind of outlines some, some of the history and some references. Given the time at this point in the meeting, I don't think it's necessarily a great time to have, start having this discussion. But you also have the, the last set of goals that we did set, which were for the 2019, 2020 school year, and the set from the year before that. And I asked Wendy to include both because we had approached it differently those, those two years, and so they are, they have a little bit different feel to the goals. In, in both cases, some of the goals tie directly to the strategic plan, and some of them don't. So essentially, what I'm proposing is that, you know, next meeting, we'll finish up our review of where we're at with the strategic plan. We'd like to have a more, you know, a detailed discussion about what we would like to see in school board goals for next year, and then that we would, we would hopefully appoint one of us to reduce those to, to written form, and then in, one of the, one of the meetings in June, that we would, we would approve those. And these are our goals for the school board, not necessarily, I mean, the superintendent is, is always involved in the things that we do, but, but these are not necessarily specifically goals for administrator or for a particular school. It's really at the, at the board level of things that we want to tackle next year. So, any discussion about that process or what's involved there? Our, our policy alludes to us creating goals, but doesn't tell us exactly how to do it or anything. So there's not really a lot of structure aside from tradition to, to guide that. All right, so you'll see that on the agenda next time. Our next item is, is very important. Our, our school year, our lives have been in all kinds of different directions over the course of last two years over the COVID-19 pandemic. And throughout that, within the school community, our school nurses have been on the front line every single day, including, including quite often not the school day. And recognizing that is, is appropriate. So you have in the, in the backup materials, a proposed recognition by the school board and the superintendent, which I would like to read for your consideration. So, "A global pandemic was declared in March of 2020 that resulted in the nation being in crisis and the closure of New Hampshire schools. The COVID-19 pandemic sent fear throughout the nation, state, and local communities. If not for the country's healthcare professionals, the devastation due to loss of life would have been much greater. In the Oyster River Cooperative School District, our school nurses have been on the front lines of the pandemic for our families, staff, and students from the beginning. Be it known that the ORCSD nurses spent many hours and days in contact with the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services and the CDC to ensure their knowledge of state and federal COVID-19 guidelines, it was always current to help keep the greater Oyster River Cooperative School District community informed and following best practices. Be it known, in the ever-changing guidance from the CDC and the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, even when that guidance was not aligned, Oyster River Cooperative School District nurses always offered professional and courteous guidance to families, staff, and students. Be it known that the ORCSD nurses were on-call 24/7, inclusive of early mornings, evenings, and to support families, staff, and students. The nurses gave up personal time with their families to provide quality care for families, staff, and students. Be it known, on a personal level, ORCSD nurses carried an enormous emotional burden as caregivers, taking on professional and emotional responsibility for the care of the greater ORCSD community. They assumed the weight of the world with professionalism and grace. Given this incredible effort and service to the entire school community, the Oyster River Cooperative School Board and Superintendent commend the Oyster River Cooperative School District nurses for their dedication and an amazing job well done. And if approved, we hereby sign and provide this letter of commendation and certificate to you personally and for posterity with appreciation." Dr. Morse, would you like to add anything?
I just, you know, during the pandemic, we all faced difficulties, and the frontline nature of our nurses dealing with the most, the biggest health scare of our lives, just, they inspired me every day. And, you know, the weekends, taking calls from staff, the evenings, taking calls from, from families, the daily work with our students and our staff, they just were just the most amazing professionals that I've ever seen in my career, and this is 47 years. And I would say that in that 47 years, I've never written a letter like this or worked with a school board to, to present a group of professionals this type of commendation. Everybody in the district worked tirelessly, including our administrators and teachers, but literally, nobody was on-call 24/7. And the, these nurses are totally amazing and deserve every, every possible accolade.
So I will move.
Michael, do you need a motion?
Yes.
I motion to accept the commendation for the Oyster River Cooperative School District nurses.
We have a motion from Heather.
I will second that.
A second from Denise. Any further discussion?
Just as a parent, I'd like to say thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Six in favor, the commendation of the nurses is approved.
So our intention is to take all of the original signed documents and frame them and hand them to them as something they can put in their work office or their home office in, in a physical way of saying, "Thank you so much for a job well done." So if you haven't signed it, would you sign it?
Everyone has signed except Dan.
Oh, great, thank you.
All right. Committee updates? Any other committee updates tonight?
Hersches?
Public comment? No public comment tonight. We've got our future meeting dates, May 18th, June 1st, June 15th. That will be the rest of the school year for our meetings. I believe there's also a manifest meeting, or maybe not. Is there? Not, not, okay, June 1st is close enough. All right. So with that, I will move that we enter non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire RSA Chapter 91a, Section 3, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. This requires a, Denise?
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, and this requires a roll call vote, so.
Heather Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Yousi Terrell, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Cisneros, yes.
Matthew Bacon, yes.
Thank you. And we will, we will return to adjourn, but there will be no other, no other business following the non-public session.
Please, the councilors.
Yeah, I think that's fine.